Are you for city, you know that people want to move forward, but they're not the city who are the city?
It's amazing.
Yeah.
Do you know if Aguilar actually is looking to this, to this moment?
Yeah.
I have no idea.
Who's in the room?
I have a question, but I don't know if it's important or not.
I think that's, I don't know, I think, huh? It's good, because it's trying to, who's, who's going to win?
No, I've got a, I've got an overlap in mind.
Yeah.
Maybe they get this thing.
Yeah.
Good evening and welcome to the special meeting for the Lawrence City Council. Today's date is Tuesday, April 29, 2025. Pursuing to Chapter 20 of the Act of 2022, this meeting will be hybrid, allowing participation both in person at the city council chambers as well as remotely. We have Councilor, Councilor Infante, that is on Zoom, she's joining us remotely. Anybody that requested the Zoom link to be joined on this meeting, that could be done through the City Clerk's office. This meeting will be also transmitted live through the Facebook Lawrence City Council page as well as the YouTube Lawrence City Council page. Madam Claire Rocco.
Councilor Levy.
Present.
Councilor LaPlante.
Present.
Councilor Luzon.
Present.
Councilor Del Rosario is noted as absent. Council Santiago.
Present.
Council Mamal is noted as absent. Council Reyes.
Present.
Council Vice President Infante.
Present.
And Council President Rodriguez.
Present. Please join me for a moment of silence. Now, join me for the pledge of allegiance. Please call the roll for Councilor Del Rosario.
Councilor Del Rosario.
Present.
Right, we have Warren. This, we have a special meeting tonight, and this, this meeting was called by three councilors due to, as per Section 3.5(c), number two of the Lawrence City Council charter. Those councilors are called for this meeting were Council LaPlante, Councilor Del Rosario, and Councilor Wendy Luzon. We have one item tonight, and that, this is a new business item. This is item 16325, which is the confirmation of Maurice Aguilar, the nominee, the nominee for Chief of Police for the City of Lawrence. This nomination was sent to the council by the Mayor of the City, Brian A. Depeña. But before we get to that point, we have public participation. We have Councilor Russell, Rich Russell, that signed in for public participation. As always, the rule of the public participation are as follows. Please refer to the council as a whole, not to any individual councilors, and you're gonna have two and a half minutes.
Good evening, councilors. Richard Russell, 34 Cross Street.
At the two-minute mark, you're gonna hear a beep, and that indicate that you still have 30 seconds to speak. Thank you.
I'm sorry. I apologize. I have problems with my hearing right now. Good evening, councilors. Richard Russell, 34 Cross Street. This is strange, not having to follow Mr. Marley. Let me preface my comments with this comment. I have no issue with Captain Maurice Aguilar becoming Lawrence's next police chief, ending what could be best described as a political crap show regarding the police chief position lasting over the past two years, if I'm not mistaken. Now I'll start handing out blame for the various causes for this two-year-long crap show. Between 10 and 15 years ago, the city council bowed down to powers that be that wanted the positions of police and later fire chief taken out of civil service process, selection process. The powers on the third floor wanted to be able to appoint their nominee, and the council at that time acted in a manner to appease those on the third floor and voted to take professionalism out of those two critical jobs and replace professionalism with politics. My one last question that I have is, how much input did the Citizens Police Chief Committee have in narrowing down the field of candidates for this position? We probably will never know, because to paraphrase what Colonel Nathan Jessup said in A Few Good Movies and A Few Good Men, "We probably can't handle the truth." Everyone knows me, that I'm about as pro-public safety as an individual can be without being a member of a public safety agency. As I said at the beginning of my rant, Captain Maurice Aguilar has my approval and the approval of a great deal of my friends to become Lawrence's next police chief. Please do the right thing and confirm his appointment. Thank you.
Thank you. There is no more names. These names will be submitted for the record. So, we have one item, but before we get to that item, councilors, I just wanna give it a, an overview of, that brought us here to this moment. The City of Lawrence went into a national search for the Lawrence next Chief of Police. Out of that, several candidates applied for the position. The committee that was formed by seven members, three members of the community and two related to the police department as well as a, as a councilor, and one nominee from the mayor's office, went down to review all the candidates. After that, they performed interviews and recommend three candidates to the mayor. The mayor, after receiving those three candidates, send us a, a name for confirmation based on Section 2.0408, and the confirmation as well as Section 2.04070. So, basically, part of the Section 20408 is the procedure for confirmation. Department heads have multiples, multiple requirements. All those requirements has been met, except for the contract that haven't been signed yet, but I'm assuming that before we actually discuss this item at the subcommittee level, that will be take care of. Seven, seven different requirements are as per those two section of our ordinance, and they were sent out before tonight. One of them were not required. With that said, councilors, now we have new business, item 16325, which is the confirmation of Maurice Aguilar, a nominee for the Chief of Police of the City of Lawrence. And like I said before, this item was sent up by the mayor of the City of Lawrence to the Lawrence City Council for confirmation. At that point, councilors, this new business will be sent to the personnel committee. And at this time, no more new business, no table items, and we're gonna right away proceed with a specific date in the scheduling for subcommittees. Madam Vice President Infante and the Chair of the, of the Personnel Committee, please provide us with the date for the next meeting for personnel.
Thank you, through you, Council President. Can you, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Can you see it? Okay. Okay, just wanna make sure. I first wanna apologize to my colleagues, I was not gonna make it in time to Lawrence from my work events. I apologize for not being there in person. The Personnel Committee meeting is going to be scheduled for Monday, May 12 at six, six o'clock PM.
Monday, May 12. Receive. At this time, councilors, I entertain a motion.
Council President, I got a problem with your question as well. Would we still, since this is gonna be Monday, we have our meeting on Tuesday, the 6th, can we still place it on the agenda in the expectation that it might be coming up from?
The, the date that she set up will be May 12.
That's after the meeting?
That will be May 12.
The whole idea for this special meeting tonight, Council President, is to get this to the May 6 meeting, not May, May, not for the May, May, May 6 plus 14.
Council President.
May 20th meeting.
Yes. Understood, Council LaPlante. Point well taken. Council Vice President Infante.
Thank you, Council President. So, I'm aware that we have a meeting, however, I'm not sure we're going to have more personnel items. I'm the chair of many committees, and I'm not going to have two separate committee meetings when I can have one that's gonna cover everything. We would've, we would've still had the same result if we, if this special meeting wasn't, wasn't declared. So, I apologize to my colleagues, but again, I do sit on a lot of committees, I do run on a lot of committees, and I now have a new job that's, that have more responsibilities. So I need to make sure that I'm balancing and organizing my time well in my personal life and also as a city councillor.
You, Council, Council President, that's good enough. We'd never have to explain ourselves more than what we have.
Council President, who's the vice chair of that committee? Who is the vice chair of that committee? If, if, if the chair, and I'm not debating whether or not the chair has time and capacity, that's not my point, but if there, if the vice chair is able to do this, because this is such an important issue, and as we already mentioned, this has been ongoing now since January of 2023, if the vice chair is able to, and we have two others, we will have a quorum.
Councilor LaPlante, the, the date for the meeting, to be respected to the chair, she's here with us, as allowed by Chapter 20 of the Act of 2022, this meeting is hybrid. She's online, and she set up the date. So as of this, as of this point right now, unless things change by the chair, I'm gonna respect her decision. So, at this time, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Could I ask the chair a question through you, since she's here, rather than going around the bush?
On the what item? That's gonna be, if it is, if it is on the what item? That item is already on the committee.
What, you allow to speak after that?
No. It was, it was around the setting up the date for the committee, and she already said that, and she repeated herself. Let's be respectful.
I'm very respectful, Council President. I, I, this whole, the reason why we did what we did today, to get to this point, was to try to get this matter before the May 6 meeting. This, this is the reason why seven of us are here, I think.
Council President.
Council Vice President Infante.
Thank you, through you, Council President. I would like to just state to my colleagues that no one has been, I mean, not no one, I am one of the few councillors that's been very, very publicly vocal about what's, what's been going on in the police department. So this is just as important to me as it is to all of my colleagues, and I would like to be present for that meeting, and I, and I've also served on the search committee and spent many hours doing work to get to this point.
Council Vice President, like I said, we set up meetings according to the chair, and the chair is the one that set the committee. At this time, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
There is a motion to adjourn. Can you hear a second?
Council President, Council President, if I may.
Once, once I get a second, I entertain a motion, then the motion to adjourn, I can open it for discussion. Can you hear a second? Motion failed for the lack of seconds, so we have no items. I'm not entertaining any discussion on the no items.
Council President, if I may, I don't know, can?
It's gonna be out of order. We have no item. We gotta be respectful.
Through you, Mr. President.
There is no item to be discussed.
If we have second, then motion?
Yeah, we don't have an item. We don't have an item at this place. The procedure is established. We have an item that is not open for discussion. That item is already on the subcommittee. So, at this time, we have no item to discuss. We can stay. No problem whatsoever. If you wanna have a person, a person privilege, I can open it for, for a person privilege.
I like to make a, just a two-minute, a two-minute recess, Council President?
Five minutes.
Or five minutes recess.
Second.
There is a motion to recess, that's in order, properly, probably, properly second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. We'll be back in two minutes.
You gotta, you gotta do a roll call.
Sorry.
This is on the motion to recess. Councilor Reyes, please.
Ah, yes.
Council Mamal is noted as absent. Council Santiago?
Yes.
Council Del Rosario?
Yes.
Council Luzon?
Yes.
Council LaPlante?
Yes.
Council Levy?
Yes.
Council Vice President?
Yes.
Council President.
I just wanna, before I, I vote yes, but before we go out, be aware of the open meeting law and potential violation. Okay.
Motion to get out of there.
Second.
There's a motion to tell properly second. Madam Claire, please call the roll.
There's a motion to come out of recess. Council Levy?
Yes.
Council LaPlante?
Yes.
Council Luzon?
Yes.
Council Del Rosario?
Yes.
Council Santiago?
Yes.
Council Mamal is noted as absent. Council Reyes?
Yes.
Council Vice President Infante?
Yes.
Council President Rodriguez?
I vote yes.
Council President?
Yes.
I'd like to suspend Rule 18 to allow discussion on this matter.
All right, can you read that Rule 18?
Rule 18, no debate will be allowed on any matter unless and until there is a motion pending before the council. This motion to adjourn, when to adjourn, the motion to lay upon the table or take from the table for the previous question shall be decided without debate.
Okay, what is the motion?
Suspend that rule to allow debate.
Second.
Second. All right, that is in order. And there is a motion to suspend the rules. Can I have a second?
Second.
Properly second, discussion. Are you here, none? Madam Chair, please call the roll.
Counselor Levy?
Yes.
Counselor Plant?
Yes.
Counselor Luzon?
Yes.
Counselor Del Rosario?
Yes.
Counselor Santiago?
Yes.
Counselor Marmel is noted as absent. Counselor Reyes?
Yes.
Counsel Vice President?
Yes.
Counsel President Rodriguez?
I vote present. What's the count?
Eight to one. I'm seven. I'm so sorry, seven to one.
Seven to one. Okay, motion carries. Allowing discussion on the suspension of the rule. Discussion is open.
Sure, so I'll start this. So Counsel President, I do want to, I do appreciate all the hard work that the Counsel Vice President does. I will acknowledge that she serves on many committees. She chairs the committee on the whole by the fact that she's the Vice President of the council. She chairs the Budget Committee. She serves the Personnel Committee. She served on many other ad hoc committees you've assigned her to, Counsel President. So there's no denying the fact that she does an awful lot of work and does a lot of work for the City Council. No denying that. In this particular instance, while acknowledging that, we have a matter that needs to be dealt with, which is why we are all here this evening, with the anticipation and the hope that we can get something to the Personnel Committee in a timely manner so that we can move on this process either for or against. But we need to move on something in time for the next meeting. And so what we're looking for, I believe that there are three other committee members who will be, who can be present. I don't know it for sure, but I think that we can still conduct that. And if the Vice President and the Chair can, if she's not around, whatever it is, maybe she can join remotely, that could work as well. But we need to, if there are enough counselors to conduct business, we should conduct business.
No question about that, Counselor Plant, that is the case. And at this moment, we have a date that has been set as Monday, May 12. If the Chair of the Committee decide, as always, she have the privilege of setting up and the right to set up those committee meetings, she can change it. At this point, she called for that meeting. On my end, as a Counsel President, I never question the chairs of any committee, and this is going to be, this is not going to be their session. I'm not going to question her about when she set up the meeting. I will be respectful to that decision, as always. For 10 years, I've been here, and I have chaired many committees. Nobody have questioned any of those dates being set. On another hand, you've been here for 20 years, and I'm pretty sure that this has been the case for over 20 years. What we're doing, we're setting up precedence. We need to be respectful to the time that she set. She is the Chair of that committee. And at this point, this is what it is. It is no question around all their, all their time, because she already have set that time.
Counsel President?
Counselor Del Rosario?
Through you, Counsel President. Are the members of that committee available for that day too? Because they didn't ask also. She just said, in all respect that she does, and I respect the hard work that she put in, but did she ask the other members, some of them are present, if they're available for that day? That's another thing. She just said the day, I mean, they haven't, they haven't said if they're available for that day, if they could request another day where they will be available. I mean, that would be a question that I would ask as a, if I were to be the Chair.
Counsel President? Counsel President?
Yes, give me one minute, Counsel Vice President. Yes, she have the right to set up those dates, as always. Counsel Reyes?
I want to mention for the record, I cancel my previous commitment because I believe when we had the special meeting today was because we putting on before our full council meeting for next Monday. That is the reason I cancel my routine, because I cancel my previous commitment for be present tonight and having personal committee on Monday's fit. And then on Tuesday, we have the item in our agenda or something like that. So I want to mention that part because I have a lot of responsibility and also I have service through different committee. But I put my heart to be present tonight to moving forward this item.
No, I understand that counselors have commitment and they show up to the special meeting as always when we call a special meeting. I appreciate that you're here. But having an anticipation of a potential date of a meeting, that is, that is not, that was not part of the discussion. And essentially, if that was discussed with multiple members, that could be a potential violation of the open meeting law, because that could be a deliberation of a potential meeting in the future. So this is not, that was not part of the agenda. The agenda was to discuss this item, or to send this item to the, to the, to the committee as per the rules. So that's, I understand, and I respect that. I also have commitment, and we're here because we are committed to the City of Lawrence.
Point of Parliament, Chief Counsel President?
That was not, that was not the intent, because that was, that was, we always ask the committee's chairs for the date of the subcommittees.
Point of Parliament, Chief Counsel President?
Yes, Counsel Plant.
You mentioned, Counsel President, that if we did something, it would be in violation of the open meeting laws.
I didn't say that, I said potentially.
Where would that trap be? I want to make sure I heard you correctly.
I said potentially. You interpreted as you.
No, I don't want to interpret, I want to know exactly what you meant by that, so I don't have to guess.
I say potentially, that could be, and that's in plain English. Potentially, that could be. You're the attorney here.
Scheduling, so scheduling, so scheduling, and seeing if people are available for a meeting would be a potential violation of the open meeting law?
Deliberating is a potential violation of the open meeting law.
But not checking on availability for meeting dates? Would that be?
Well, that was, that was not, I said potentially.
Counsel President?
Counsel Vice President?
Thank you. So I'm hearing my colleagues. We all have commitments. I mean, I'm still here, I'm not physically there, but I'm still here, present in the meeting. And I want to say two things. My first comment is, when we have our regular meetings and the chairs schedule meetings, no one jumps to ask, is everyone available? So I don't understand what makes the situation different. Secondly, throughout the entire situation with the Police Department, and I'm only going to speak, use myself an example. I have openly spoken against the situation and against the administration, whereas some of my colleagues, at some, at times, they silent because they did not want to go against the administration to do the right thing. So now, I, what, the way that I'm interpreting things, we have people trying to be heroes. Where was, where was this energy when we needed it, when things were extremely serious within the Police Department? I am doing my commitment, we're still within the 30 days to get this confirmation done, and I have scheduled the Personnel Meeting for May 12, Monday, May 12, at 6:00 PM. And we're still in, we're still aligned with everything that we need to do to get it in, in time. That's all, Counsel President.
Counsel Luzon?
Thank you, Counsel President, through you. I think the emergency was to make sure that this item was in the agenda for the next City Council meeting. And I also know that we all received a call. We all knew that this was going to happen. And everyone say yes to this emergency meeting, even though some of you were not in favor. May I finish my point, Counsel President?
Just a point of information for you. This is not an emergency meeting, this is an especial.
When a special, okay, thank you, for the special meeting. Where all of us were, the City Clerk asked every one of us if we were available for this meeting, and we all responded yes. Because I must, because we, you know that a package has to be sent to our houses, our home. And we all say yes. I don't understand why you needed, some of us, or the Chair, Madam Chair, needed to wait into today. If you were not in agreement with this, you could have said no. And whoever was not in agreement to this meeting, you were, you could have said no. I'm also the Vice Chair of the Personnel Committee, and I'm available. I'm available for Monday at 6:00. And I'm assuming the rest of the city councils are that serve in that committee are available. I think it's time, and I do understand the effort and the work that the Madam Chair put into this. Some of us did similar. We spoke against, about, against the administration, and yes, but that is the past. Now, we have something in front of us that we asked, that we fought, and it's in front of us. Why do we need to extend it? I think it's time to put aside our ego and do the right thing. And it's simple, it's an item, it's a, an item that needs approval of the suit committee. It's not even the full council. We all going to have an opportunity to interview, to speak, to interview the candidate on the full council meeting. So what we asking now, and I don't, I don't see, why is it so impossible? We are asking if the Madam Chair is not available, let me run the meeting on Monday, and let's send it, if it gets approved. Because let's say that the committee doesn't approve, it's going to stay there. If it gets approved, it's going to be sent to the full council on Tuesday. And everyone that put so much energy into this process will have the opportunity to speak and to ask the candidate. So if possible, Madam Chair, I ask you respectfully to let me run the meeting on Monday, and we'll take it from there, if it's possible, Madam Chair. Thank you, Counsel President.
Thank you.
Counsel President?
Yes, Counsel Vice President, give me one minute. It is important to recognize the following. There is, there is, the process is what is being followed. She's following the process by setting up the meeting. The process stays that we have a month to take action on the department heads decision based on section that I mentioned, 2.2, 3.7 of the charter. She is not going away from the process. What we are doing here, having an especial meeting potentially could be seen of going away from the process. But what she's did, no, 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 give me one minute, Counsel Luzon. I haven't finished talking. And then Counsel Vice President, I'm going to recognize her next. She is not going away from the process. She is following the process. The process is as normal as possible. So those comments around ego, around this, around that, that's, that's not, that's not right, because I mean, she have been following the process.
But let her answer, let her answer.
No, because I'm managing the meeting.
You cannot answer for another colleague.
I'm talking about the process, Counsel Luzon.
No, you're giving me an answer that should, supposed to come from the Vice Chair, from the Madam Chair.
I'm the, I'm the.
But are you giving your opinion? You're giving your opinion. You're giving your opinion.
Counsel Vice President Infante?
Counsel President?
Counsel Vice President?
Thank you, through you, Counsel President. So I've made my stance very clear. Actually, the Counsel President was repeating what I, what I stated when I spoke previously, my first comment about still being within the 30 days and still, still being within the process. I stand firm with my decision to schedule this meeting on May 12 at 6:00 PM. We're talking about respect, and right now, I'm not being respected as the Chair. I'm not, I'm not. So it's not about egos or anything like that. I'm still following the process. I've been following the whole process of this situation from the beginning. So I just want to make that clear.
Counsel President, if I may?
Give me one minute, Counsel Luzon.
So with that, Counsel President, I will not be changing the date. The date for the Personnel Committee meeting will be May 12.
May 12 at 6:00 PM. All right, any other counselors, before I go back to Counsel Luzon? Counsel Luzon?
Thank you, Counsel President. And I'm going to respond to Madam Chair. Respect. You started this, you started by saying that some of the counselors and.
Wanted to be heroes now. So you, you opened a door for this conversation. You say that, and it's incorrect. She say that. So you, and unfortunately, and I have to say that, you opened that door. You opened the door. And yes, I'm not part of that, because I was openly against the administration, it is on record. But you opened that door. So you were disrespectful to some of my colleagues. So that's why I answered back to you and to the Counsel President. Thank you, Counsel President.
No problem, any other counselors?
Counsel President?
Counsel Del Rosario?
Mr. Hooton, do you want to add anything to, do you have anything to say? No? You shaking your head over that, you okay? Are you sure? Come on, you have the time. I think we're going to sit here for a long time.
Counsel President?
No, give me one minute, Counsel Del Rosario.
Through you, Counsel President.
Counsel President?
Yeah, give me one minute, Counsel Del Rosario. Okay. Counsel Vice President, before we go back to you, Counsel Vice President, I want to recognize Counsel Reyes.
Okay.
I'm very respectful because. My, was in vacation, he asking me, see, he not be present, see, I can ruin in the meeting. Yeah, I think, no, was nothing wrong. We not violate any, any by law. I don't understand right now. I know Maranchia expressed, she want to be present, and she have the right, she is the Chair. But I want to mention that part because through the ordinance committee, see, my Chair cannot be present, he called me and asking you be, you can ruin in the meeting. And we can look at the schedule, we can find out. But I don't know what is the tough situation today.
Counsel Vice President Infante?
Actually, thank you, Counsel President. I actually have no further comment. I believe I've said everything that I, that I needed to say and, and my decision.
Any other counselors? Any other motion?
Counsel President, are there any other options? I mean, I'll ask you as a parliamentarian, if that's before us.
If you give me a minute, I'll definitely want to give you an answer, just going through this. this. Counselors, there is, can I entertain a motion to adjourn? There is no motion to adjourn. I'm going to, on our rules.
I'd like to make a motion, Council President, before we make whatever the rule.
What is the motion?
I'll, I'll link Mr. Florida, my colleague from District B.
Thank you. Thank you, Council, Councilor LaPlante. I would love to make a motion based on Rule 11. I want to discharge the item from the personnel committee. Rule 11 at the end, Madam Clerk. I want to take it out of the personnel committee, bring it back to.
There isn't, there isn't a specific order.
What you're saying, Councilor Rosario, according to Rule 11, which is suspension of the rule, and the second part of the rule says that no committee should be discharged of the matter pending before the committee unless six or more members of the council consent their off. So you need six votes.
Second.
There is a motion on the table to take.
AMI, wait a minute. As per Rule 11 of the city council rules, what you're saying, they want to make a motion to pull it from committee. And, and second section of the committees of this Rule 11 says, no committee should be discharged of the matter pending before the committee unless six or more members of the council consent their off. So you need six votes to, for this motion to go over. So there's a motion on the table, properly second discussion. I hear none. At this point, Madam Clerk, please call the, call the question.
Councilor Levy.
Yes.
Councilor LaPlante.
Yes.
Councilor Luzon.
Yes.
Councilor Del Rosario.
Yes.
Councilor Santiago.
Yes.
Councilor Marmel is noted as absent. Councilor Reyes.
Yes.
Council Vice President.
No.
Council President Rodriguez.
No.
No. One, two, three, four, five, six, you got six. Six favor.
One absent, two, no.
Okay, motion carries. Now we have the item here. Now we have, we entertaining motion. I mean, we're entertaining the business 16324, which is confirming of Maurice Aguilar, the nominee for the chief of police. And this item was sent out to the city council by Mayor Brian A. De Peña. We have that, we have the item at this point here.
Council President?
Council, Councilor LaPlante.
I'd like to make a motion that we suspend the rules and to essentially not send it to a committee and keep it here at the full council level for a vote next Tuesday.
Second.
Well, there is no such thing. That is not in order. Because we have to send it to committee.
Suspend the rule.
What is the rule?
Rule six of the city council shall provide for the establishment of standing committees by which all business shall be referred to study and the condition of what actions taken by the council. The president of the council shall appoint members to the standing committees. So are you saying we're suspending Rule six?
No, no, no.
At, at the risk of getting involved in this, a simpler solution.
Attorney, Attorney Hooton.
A simpler solution is to table the matter and then bring it up at the next meeting.
Could you repeat it, please?
Yes, you have it before you. You have the vote for the police chief. You vote to table it. On Tuesday night, you vote to untable it.
And then we can call it at that point to have a vote that evening?
Yes.
Motion to table.
So, Attorney Hooton, before I recognize the motion, can you repeat that again, please, for the record?
You have, you've brought this forward. You've brought it back from committee. It's before you. Like any other matter, it's before the city council at this time. One of your options under the rules is you can table any matter. You can table that matter tonight. It is then under tabled matters. Under proper procedure, at your next meeting, you can untable it if you wish. I'm not, not getting any position of what you want to do, that you're the committee. I'm just telling you, that is an option that you have.
There is no discussion on the table matters. I just want to make sure that we get it. Not on the table matters. I mean, it is, it is a motion in front of us already. Motion to table.
Well, there is not. I, I can't make a motion.
We hear a motion from Council Luzon, and it was second, right?
Yes.
If I could comment on this, can the motion, can the motion be withdrawn? Motion to table be withdrawn for discussion? Then we can have a discussion on this publicly.
Motion withdrawn.
Thank you.
There's a motion to, motion, there is a, you withdraw your motion to table, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, Council President. Motion to withdraw, the motion to table.
There is not, there is no motion, no motion.
No motion to table.
You just withdraw your motion.
Sorry.
There is.
Let me repeat again. Motion to withdraw.
I say there is no.
Oh, I don't need to make a question.
You just withdraw your motion to table.
Okay, thank you.
So at this point, we need a motion to.
Council President.
For discussion.
Charter objection.
There is a charter objection to a, to a vote, potentially.
Charter objection to a vote?
There's a motion to vote.
That we have, we don't have a motion to open it for discussion. So before I open it for discussion, I need a motion at this time. We have, we brought it up from committee. That is in order. Now we need a motion. And once we have a motion, I'm going to recognize the charter, the charter objection for the vote.
Sure.
Until we have that, we can continue the discussion. But we need a motion to be able to discuss.
Can I make a motion for purpose of discussion?
For, for?
Can I ask you for that, Madam Chair?
Motion to approve for purpose of discussion.
There is a motion to approve for the purpose of discussion. Can I hear a second?
Second.
Properly second. Now we can open it for discussion. Once we call for the vote, I will recognize the charter objection at that point. So discussion.
I only have a question, Council President.
Councilor Levy.
My question was for Mr. Hooton. Thank you, Mr. Hooton. See, we table, if we table this item.
That's, that's not in order.
It's a question.
Is that in order? She's talking about, under the discussion of, of the approval, she's talking about potential motion?
She, she's asking legal opinion, I'm guessing.
So he mentioned that we can table the item. So my question was, we table the item in here, and that we table the item, because the item was sent to like the personnel committee. So the item is going to be table in here, and we can take it from here to the full council, or we take it from the personnel committee to the full council.
The matter is back before the full council right now. The matter is not before personnel. You voted to remove it from personnel. It is now before you. If you wanted to, you could vote on it right now. You could have hearings on it. You can do, this is a regular meeting. You could do everything that a regular meeting wants to do. You can bring the candidate up. You can ask him questions. You can take a look at it. You can do anything you want. As a regular, it's a regular item before a regular council meeting.
Thank you. Thank you for the clarification.
Any other discussion?
I think it's a brilliant motion. Honestly. To the council, to my district, District B. So it was a brilliant motion. I'll be supporting that motion this evening. And even if there's a charter objection, this will still be coming up. It'll still be coming up on Tuesday. All right. Thank you, Council President.
Any other discussion?
So there's a motion to approve. I'm not ready for that.
I understand.
That's, I'm just, I want to, I want to understand.
Wait a minute. I need to, I need to be fair to the councilors.
So if there's no one else who wishes to speak, I'm.
Counselor, counselor, counselor. I understand the process. Okay? So there is any other discussion on the matter before I call the question?
Yes. I do not, to be called, I don't want to vote this evening. I want this motion to be tabled this evening.
But and then, there is, I have a motion in front of me.
Sure do.
So if, if, I cannot change the motion.
Can't. There is a motion right here to approve.
There, I mean, there is not, there is no way for me to change the motion.
Can't. We're not looking for it.
There is no more discussion before I call the question.
What's the question?
The question in front of us is to approve for the purpose of discussion.
For the purpose of discussion, that's the motion?
That's the motion that we have in front of us, correct, Madam Clerk?
No.
There, it is the motion for the purpose of the.
Motion to approve.
To approve for the purpose of discussion.
That's the motion to approve.
That's what she said. I can't change the wording.
No, but when you make a motion to approve for purposes of discussion, that means you reserve the right to, to pull it back later. You also don't have to pull it back later.
That's right.
If we make a motion right now, Mo Aguilar is going to be the next police chief tonight, if, if this motion passes.
Yeah, and I understand that.
That's, that's not what this counselor wants tonight. This counselor wants this to be a vote next Tuesday.
Counselor, counselor, I can't make a motion. I can't make a motion. We have a motion in front of us. And procedure wise, I need to proceed. I can't stop. So what I'm saying, if it is any motion that over, 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 that trump this previous motion, if it's in order, I entertain it. What is, there is any other motion? I can't call for a motion.
No, I'm, I'm, there is a motion. The motion to table trumps the final, the final.
There is, there is no motion to table, counselor.
I'm making a motion.
You are, but make it. Make the motion to, make the motion to table. Because right now, we don't have anything.
Council President.
Should the table, Council President?
There is a motion to table. No discussion on the table matter. Please, Madam, Madam, Councilor, Councilor Rosario, second it. All of us in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Please call the roll.
Sorry. Can't write this down.
I can't, I can't, I can't make a motion.
Councilor Reyes on the motion to table.
Yes.
Councilor Marmel is noted as absent. Councilor Santiago.
Yes.
Councilor Del Rosario.
Yes.
Councilor Luzon.
Yes.
Councilor LaPlante.
Yes.
Councilor Levy.
Yes.
Council Vice President Infante.
Yes.
Council President Rodriguez.
I vote, yes.
Perfect.
The, the motion carries. What's the motion?
Motion to adjourn.
There is a motion to.
Second.
Properly second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilor Levy.
Yes.
Councilor LaPlante.
Yes.
Councilor Luzon.
Yes.
Councilor Del Rosario.
Yes.
Council Santiago.
Yes.
Councilor Marmel, noted as absent. Councilor Reyes.
Yes.
Council Vice President.
Yes.
Council President Rodriguez.
Yes. Motion carries.